Department reports from Water and Sewer and Department of Public Works. For action items, we have consideration and possible action to increase the FY 25 spending limit to $60,000 for the Board of Health Pay As You Throw. Action item B, consideration and possible action to increase the fee for a municipal lien certificate from $25 to $50. Action item C, consideration and possible action on the approval for the following Town of Osterbridge election workers, Joanne Chamberlain, Tim Bardley, Beverly Spreeman, Stan Delman, Chris Wilson, Pat Roy, Marie Dubre, Alyssa K., Elaine Cook, Diane Trapatio, Susan Schwartz, Arthur Omet, Michelle Moran, Sandra Gibson Quigley, Nancy Forz, Pat Howard, Janet Ray Sinian, Lucette Dunlop Fabro, Cheryl Economis, and Chris Cassendike, Nancy Cassendike, Dino Economis, Deb Morris, Marcia Mattioli, and Sharon McDonald. Action item D, consideration and possible action on signing the warrant for 2024 state primary. Action item E, consideration and possible action on a transient vendor application for David Brockman, DB and BC Productions LLC for a vintage clothing show at the Sturbridge Host. Action item F, consideration and possible action to accept the letter of resignation from Patrick Brissette from the Sturbridge Cultural Council. Action item G, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Sandra Gibson Quigley to the Sturbridge Tourist Association. Action item H, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Ed Goodwin to the Community Preservation Committee. Action item I, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Penny Dumas to the Community Preservation Committee. Hey. Yeah, I was gonna say, you left me with all the reading, I see. All right. Action item J, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Jim Douglas to the Sturbridge Cultural Council. Action item K, consideration and possible action to authorize the Chair to execute the agreement with tie-in bond for the well number one water treatment plant filter media. Action item L, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Barbara Serge to Community Preservation Committee. Action item M, consideration and possible action on the appointment of Deana Sexton to the Community Preservation Committee. Action item N, consideration and possible action to ratify the action of accepting a $55,000 cybersecurity grant from the Commonwealth. Action item O, consideration and possible action to reappoint Karsten Stubber to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June 29, 2027. Action item P, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Antonia Squire to the Cultural Council for a term to expire June 30, 2027. And action item Q, consideration and possible action to authorize the Chair to execute the agreement with tie-in bond in the amount of $65,300 for the Grand Trunk Trail Continuation Amendment. Then we'll have old business, new business, correspondence, approval amendments, and citizen forum. And with that, I will let Jamie take over.
Do you already do the pledge?
No.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to just a moment of silence, has things seemed to be escalating in the Middle East? I just take the moment as a prayer for peace and any other place in the world that's facing Thank you. Public services announcements, Mary Lou.
I have nothing this week.
Mr. Chase.
I have none, thank you.
Mary?
Yes, National Night Out is tomorrow on the Common, sponsored by the Police and Fire Department, four to seven.
Excellent. Thanks, Mary. All right, and I have none. Moving to the town administrator update, Robin.
So let's start with our housing coordinator introduction. Jean is here to introduce April to you, and we are very, why don't I get it back to you? I don't usually get that. We are very excited to introduce April Griffin. I think we have too many mics on. Jean, can you pop a few of those off? I think sometimes you get feedback when we have. There we go. Beautiful. So this is the position that we had worked with CPA to fund as part of our housing trust in moving forward, and it's a part-time position to basically apply what it is that the trust comes up with for programs and have a face of the program that the people can see, that can help implement these programs. So we interviewed, hoping we would get somebody who would have some skill set like this, and we got April, who's out of Connecticut, so she has a little bit of Massachusetts learning to do, but I told her I came out of an island, so it's doable. But April really, I think, I don't want to speak for Jean, but April really impressed us with her initiative, her willingness to see problems and resolve them, to go get grants for things. I mean, she saw a problem with a wheelchair issue and went out and got a grant and resolved the problem. And so I think we really just felt that that kind of initiative, particularly with a brand-new program that needs the creativity of someone who has that kind of mindset, that she was really the perfect fit for us. So Jean, if you want to...
Yes, I agree. We interviewed several candidates, and I think there wasn't really a discussion between Robin and I. She was really our unanimous choice. She came highly recommended from her prior employer. She has a lot of great work experience. I think she'll be a great fit for the team. She started today. We went around and we met all the staff, brought her over to the senior center, we're setting up some meetings with her to outreach to the churches and some of the other organizations in town in the weeks to come, and I'm excited to have her as part of the team and welcome her aboard. Fit. Lot of...
Okay, how many hours is it, Jean?
Ten to fifteen hours a week. So it will mainly be on Mondays and Tuesdays. We'll have to work with the schedule a little to see how that goes. She does work for the State of Connecticut on Wednesdays and Thursdays, so I had kind of wanted her here in the beginning of the week because the trust meets on Tuesday, Board of Selectmen meets on Wednesday, so when she needs to bring programs before you, I think the scheduling will work out well. Today, she's been here since one o'clock, and then she'll finish up her hours tomorrow. She's coming in at nine, probably nine to one tomorrow.
And we're gonna have her, try to have her here during the late hours on our Mondays so that people, if people need to interact with her for program reasons, she will be here for the public after work hours. A lot of the people that may need that service don't have paid time off to be able to...
Great, yeah. Anything else, Mary? Questions from the board? All right, well, welcome aboard.
I'm really excited to be here. Thank you so much for having me. Thank you for the kind words, and I'm very excited to be here. I think this is gonna be a requisite program. Great. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thanks.
Yeah, you have to say hi to us, unfortunately.
It's like a wedding receiving line. Say hi.
Thank you.
Thanks, April. You know, we turned him off because we thought that was the problem, Bruce. I don't know what the, we're getting feedback. So I'd like to ask Josh Rickman to come up from WRTA. Josh had been working with me initially when we had the infiltration of homeless from the state come in, and we had transportation issues for people trying to get to supermarkets, and we had concerns about people walking along Route 120 and Route 131, and he worked on a state grant to try to get services to supermarkets and access. That discussion came up, and a few people said to me, "Well, is there any way that service can be expanded to everybody in town who might need access to elderly people, disabled people, people who don't have a car?" And so Josh worked on this grant that he was able to obtain for us and get it expanded, and we're really pleased that it officially kicks off today. I'll let Josh talk about the details of it, and I also want to say Josh is a relatively new addition to WRTA, and he has really brought so much to WRTA. He's really been very much a pleasure to work with.
Thank you, Robin. Again, Josh Rickman, Administrator, WRTA. He'll be one year in a couple of weeks.
I thought it was going, never again there.
As Robin said, when the migrant population was moving into the region, we were trying to identify ways at WRTA to find a way to satisfy the transportation needs without hitting the town's pockets. So there's a transit innovation grant that's available that we applied for, but when we wrote that grant, Robin brought up some, the commentary raised about other individuals in town that need services as well. So we wrote the grant, we said, "Yes, it's gonna be for migrant transportation, but also for individuals within the community for their needs." So we worked with our contractor, SCM Elderbus, who currently provides services in the town on Monday, Wednesday, and Fridays for out-of-town medical, and Monday through Friday for in-town trips, but there's certainly a lot of need for other transportation purposes. So we secured that grant, and starting today, the Sturbridge Local Link is in operation, and basically what it provides is anybody in town can call up SCM Elderbus, they have to register first, and they can get in-town transportation, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, in-town, or also into South Bridge. So that gives you connections to retail, to shopping, to medical, to employment, all of those things. So from 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, any resident in Sturbridge has availability to call SCM Elderbus, no charge, and get a ride in-town or over to South Bridge. So it's a really exciting opportunity for us. Many of our rural or suburban communities outside of Worcester, there's a need for more transportation, so this grant's gave us an opportunity to see how successful we can be in the region and what we can do to further those transportation services.
And Josh brought...
Yes, and I also brought Nick Burnham, our Director of Operations and Planning, and Jorge Morales, who is the Executive Director of SCM Elderbus.
And again, just because it's run through Elderbus, we want to remind everybody, it is not a senior program. It is for all ages.
Great.
That's awesome.
Good. How many trips, at least in the surrounding community, you know, basically the corridor we're talking about is 131, and I guess we're at 20, how many trips are we doing right now?
Sure, so Nick, do you have a...
I don't have a rough number off the top of my head, but certainly something we can get to Robin for you.
Yep. Now we can come with some root profiles that give some good information about how much money services are provided for you, and then how much the town assessment is with a number of trips as well. We can write that information.
But to emphasize, this does not hit our town assessment.
Right. Yeah, no, no, I wasn't concerned about that part of it. I just was wondering about the balance between availability, need, and if there's other need that we can address or creating efficiencies on it. That's all.
This will be available through June 30 of 2025. That's when the grant expires, and I have some flyers here to hand out to everybody, and anything we can do to partner, if there's a church group you work with, if there's some social service group you work with, you know, please, you know, send them our way, and we're happy to do some outreach to spread this word, because we'd really want to see people start taking the services.
Great. Very good. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Josh. Thanks, guys. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for coming, too. We appreciate it.
Oh, thanks, great.
Thank you.
Beautiful. All right, bi-weekly memo, we'll go through this pretty quickly, as Selectwoman Blanchard mentioned, National Night Out. I will be there tomorrow. Sturbridge Opioid Society's gonna have a table for the first year, so I will be there covering that till about 6:00 or 6:30, along with our library out there, and of course, our police and fire, and we welcome everybody to join us. U-S-Ox, reminder, Takeover the Town, takeover of Sturbridge, August 13th, up at the stadium, the Polo Stadium. You can get online and order tickets through that, and they're the special order, and then Sturbridge gets credit for that. We continue to deal with private road issues. We're exploring options on betterment. We will be having a meeting with Birch Street residents on September 3rd. We continue to work with residents of Lake and Old Town Way within the confines of our capacity to work on these traffic mitigation programs. You may be hearing calls from people about the privates. We are trying to weed through this, and every private road is different because the ownership and the deeds are different on every private road. Pan Mass, we had the Pan Mass kickoff on, well, Friday they meet, and they kick off early Saturday morning. We actually had a team of people that, I think Barbara coordinated, to go out Friday morning, and a bunch of our ladies in town, Saturday morning, a bunch of the ladies in town met and cheered everybody on.
Did you get up, Barbara?
I did.
Barbara was there.
I saw Jim Malloy.
Now, I asked Charlie who we saw. He didn't see anybody.
He didn't see Charlie, but I saw Jim.
Oh, he was here bright and early.
Maybe Charlie didn't go.
Charlie went somewhere and had Barbara Porphy instead.
He's out for breakfast without you, Mary.
Yeah, Charlie went to breakfast without Mary.
Come home the night before.
Wow. And I did, I did speak to Sue Brogan a little. I think she and I are gonna meet, they were down some riders this year, and for a whole host of reasons, some related to our town, some not related to our town, but I do think that's important for us to take a look at because it's such a huge event. So Sue and I will be meeting, once she decompresses from this, to talk a little bit and see if we can make sure that we don't, that we don't continue to lose and that maybe we get some of those back. Some of it is just the aging population of the people that traditionally do it. Other issues have a whole host of other reasons, so we're on that. Accelerated budget timeline, just so you are aware, the two new town meeting date leads to the 10-month cycle. We likely will not have a special meeting prior. I haven't heard anything critical that we have to do, and given that the meeting's gonna be in April, and our special last year was like in the end of January or February, it really doesn't make sense unless we had something particularly dramatic that we had to do. We are working on a calendar cycle. Barbara has done a draft calendar, and we'll start the process on September 3rd with a presentation to the board in early to mid-February. Job description, we are looking, I'm working, we haven't scheduled yet with the Personnel Committee, we have a bunch of job descriptions that need to be updated. We're working on that now. Most of it's just cleanup language and really updating to reflect the work that people are actually doing. Some of those never even got updated during the classification plan, which was surprising, and so we have job things from 2014 with a classification plan from 2020, 2019. I haven't filled the position at COB, the part-time position, because that you had all supported me to scale back to part-time. I've held because we have a new conservation agent, a new building official, we have this new position in housing, which is still another body in the building, even though she's CPA-funded and her work is somewhat confined, it's still another body to answer her phone or to, if she sees somebody wandering in a hall, is still there. Until I see the needs and get an assessment from Lauren in Conservation, and Bill is a new person, when you have two new major department directors, I think it's good to give them a chance to sort of give their feedback as new people coming in on what they think their needs are. So I'm not in any rush to do anything there right now. Everything is okay, so we're not, we're not running into trouble, but I just want their assessment as well. They're two strong positions over there that are important into that play. I also sent an email last week inviting you all to meet Lauren if you would like to. Please feel free to reach out to her. She's got her feet wet now, she's been here a couple months, and she's happy to talk to any of you and meet with you. I think she's just a tremendous addition, and she's working to really get to know her board and the commission and the role here at Sturbridge. So it is such an important department to us in the town, and it's a very high-profile department, let's face it, in this town, so, you know, and so if you'd like, please do not hesitate to reach out and schedule something together. And that is it from me.
All right. With that going to the department reports, Shane, I think you are up, my friend.
Good evening. How's it going? It's been a while since I've been here. I don't think I've been here since February.
Are you avoiding us?
It's not me. I come when you call. So I have given you all department reports from March through June, also given you the documentation you asked on the high-usage literature in the March report, and so I guess I'll start with any questions you have on the monthly reports.
Any questions from the board? No, I don't have any.
Lot of reading.
Yeah.
Lot going on.
So some other things real quick, I don't want to take up a lot of your time. Tomorrow, I'll be meeting with the person we chose to be the intern from the Antasqua High. He'll be starting in a couple of weeks. This is a program that Violia pays for because we just don't have anybody getting into the business. So our hope is that we'll train him, get him certifications, try and find him a place within Violia, but we can consider a success if he just gets in the field. And this will be, as far as I know, an ongoing program. One will come in, he'll do the program for a year, then we'll select another one. This is something we hope to keep going because, like I said, like a lot of trades, there's just not a lot of people getting into it, so I'll keep you updated on that. PFOS testing continues at the wastewater plant, and we did it on the landfill. The numbers at the wastewater plant, they're up, they're down, some are really high, some are really low. I don't put too much stock into it. When you get one data point, it's high, because the next time you test, it could be low. We met with OFAS because they are our biggest industrial user. We'll be sampling them next week. We know we're under the limits in the drinking water, right, and we consistently stay there, and hopefully we stay there, so that makes you wonder, if it's not in your drinking water, but it's in the wastewater, where's it coming from, right? And it could be several different locations, so, and the landfill will be in one of them. So we'll continue to do the testing, and really until the DEP or the EPA puts a limit on wastewater plants, it's just a report for now, so that's all we can keep doing. We continue to have CBOD issues as we go into CBOD season. We've actually shut off septicage in the middle of July to see if that was the cause. CBOD numbers were starting to come way down, not to where we want, so we actually shut off Leach Eight last week. I can already see the difference in the plant. The plant runs 100 times better without the septicage in the Leach Eight, so it's a fine balance of operation versus economics, right? Because if your Leach Eight's gotta go out of town, everybody's gotta pay a lot of money if you don't have septicage coming in town, and it costs you more money for, to haul your sludge to Cranston, so Heather and I are working on that, and I'll continue to update as we, as we go along on that. We did another round of lead and copper testing on the drinking water. I'm waiting on three more results. I think I had one house with a small lead hit. All the public schools passed. Any nursery schools that were private that wanted to participate passed. There was one that just wasn't interested, and the one that the town owns down on Main Street passed, so more good news there. We continue to GIS the system as we can, and we're making a lot of progress on GPSing all the E1 pumps so we can get a better grip on actually how many are out there and where they are. We're finding a lot of them are buried, and Heather will have to send letters, but we're making, I'd say we're probably about 70% complete on that. Lead and copper inventory, we've been working with Heather and another third potty, so that's in the works, and besides that, just regular maintenance and keeping the plants going.
Great. I didn't have anything else. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to push?
I don't. I don't.
No, it seemed pretty straightforward.
We have officially signed on for the national PFOS litigation if something comes up.
Yeah. See where, I mean, it's just gonna be developing.
Yeah, it's just ongoing, but we are there, just in case.
Great. Hey, thanks, Shane. Appreciate it.
Thanks, Heather.
And on Heather.
Heather, are you well? Heather? Hello. So like Shane, I haven't been here in quite some time, so we have four months of reports in front of you, and so I'm just gonna try to go through some of the highlights of things that I actually do remember that happened, and probably other more bigger highlights. 501 Main Street parking lot is complete. Obviously, we still are working on putting the permanent sign up. It has been ordered to be more in the same style of our other wayfiling signs around to be consistent, but there was a little bit of delay with the supplier, so that will be coming.
And we will do a, did, Rand?
Did you get many complaints on the van?
Yes, we definitely have gotten many complaints on the van, and we are internally trying to figure out what we're, type of signage we're going to put up. It most likely will be no long-term parking, please take notice. There might be some legalities that we need to work through with what the police can actually do as far as tickets, but we're trying to work through that right now. Yes, we've definitely received the complaints, and we're all very aware.
Being addressed through our other services as well.
Okay, because I've gotten complaints.
Yes, yeah, we're...
And take long.
No.
Nice.
Yes, unfortunately.
We will do a ribbon cutting of some sort, probably in the next month or so, I think, once that sign is in.
When that gets coordinated. Some of our other projects that we have completed this spring was some paving projects. Orchard and Lauren Lane got paved, Putnam got paved. People are relatively very happy with the outcomes. We are still busily trying to back up those edges. I know Orchard and Lauren are all complete, and all of those are complete. People seem to be pretty happy. Putnam still needs to be done. That does take us to have to have police and favorable weather conditions, which right now we haven't been really having, since it seems like it wants to rain every other Also, I will say on that, we are working, I have a draft copy of the pavement management plan that we petitioned to do. When reviewing the draft, there were some additional roads that he was supposed to do also review that weren't included, so they went, were going back out to include some more roads and then revamped that plan, so I expect that coming anytime now, within the next week or two, for my review, and then it will be finalized. Once it's finalized, that will be something that I will probably post a link right to our, onto our website so people can see what the current condition of that road is. What's nice about this plan is it also has a website that I can interact with so that if I, if when we do a change, it can update the list and what is done, so. And it also gives us a very concise, like, as you know, there are different treatments for different types of road, whether this road should be crack sealed, so now I can have a nice list of saying, these, you know, to put out to bid, please crack seal this list of roads. And then that helps us with our long-term maintenance. When we get to other roads, it also gives us a list of what needs to be maybe milled and overlaid versus full death reclaimed. In my quick review, I was quite pleased that some of the roads that I knew as being issues did kind of fall, or where I thought roads should fall, were falling right where we, what we expected, which was good. So I, you know, I think it's gonna be a good tool going forward for the next couple of years, and then three or four years down the road, we'll reevaluate to see what our evaluations, if they've actually held true. So this is an ongoing process that we should expect to continue, but it does give us that tool to be able to make decisions on, so you'll see that coming very soon. Like I said, it was just a review issue and found some things that they said they'd help us on. The one good thing that they did say in that review and why some of those roads weren't done, there's been a, when we accept a road, we have to go through the Chapter 90 acceptance process. That hasn't been happening. So we have many roads that, like Acorn, I'm trying to think of a couple of them that I can think of, Regip Lane, that have been accepted by the town but have never been listed on our Chapter 90 roads. There's a process for that. It's, it's kind of more of a technical process to go through with MASTOT and making sure that they have all the things, but when we do that, we will actually get more Chapter 90 money because of the list of the roads that we have to, that we'll be able to add. Relatively easy. A lot of it is making sure that the proper procedure was done when we accepted them, so there might be some that we might have to do some more mapping on, but for now, I know there's some that we have, the drawings, that we'll be able to add pretty quickly, which will be nice because that's gonna pay for itself within like a year, just going through this process. I want notes, and I can't review. So what else have I been doing? So we've been doing a lot of interviews. I know everybody was aware that we were down four people in our department. I actually had somebody for a senior heavy equipment operator start today, so that's great. We've had some more staff, and we've had two internal promotions. With that, we are currently, today actually conducted more interviews for Labor, and I think we have found somebody to potentially fill that position. We still have open position of the permitting and engineering manager. We had some ideas of how to reach out. We're gonna try to reach out more to some of the local colleges and see if there's somebody that maybe went back to school or even coming out that had some experience, whether summer or otherwise, and wants to work in the municipality. Maybe we can find somebody that we can bring along and get back into this field, into the municipal engineering field. So it's, it's a lot of things that I would like to get done in our department that I just don't have the capacity by myself to do, so we're trying to make do and prioritize as we go, but I need those extra, I need that extra assistance to move some of these programs further along. We have made great progress this year with our MS4, I feel. We did a whole round of sampling of our outfalls. We had very promising results, really not major issues in many of them at all, so that will be, but that was something that should have been done years before, that we've actually caught up and sampled all our known outfalls this year, which is great. In addition, we're doing a bylaw review of our bylaws because that's actually one of the requirements in the, in the new MS4 permit that happened a couple of years ago, that we're supposed to review and look at places to improve. Been working with Lauren and Jean on that, and so that's been a good tool. We're kind of checking those boxes and making sure we're actually in compliance with our MS4 permitting. If anybody, it's a quite long document that I was like, oh goodness. But there was, what was interesting is, it was kind of a, it wasn't really like, it was a scoring matrix to kind of give recommendations. There will be a recommendation package coming out of it, so you'll be able, we'll bring it to you so you see it, but there are some things that we are way ahead on, and other it to you so you see it, but there are some things that we are way ahead on and other things that we're, you know, where there was like three tiers. There was like conventional, you know, to advanced. We're very advanced when you look at how much land we have put in for protection. Like, so we're probably way ahead of a lot of other surrounding communities and other MS4 communities. And really, that is, if you protect land like we do with conservation easements, that's the best type of thing you can do for your MS4, right? Because we're never going to let it be developed. It's never going to be impervious. It's going to stay natural. It doesn't have the issues that we could be developing. So that, um, that's currently where I've been working with Lauren on some beaver issues. I think everybody knows we've had multiple beaver problems over near Old Sturridge Village and near the pump station near Burgess. And, um, in speaking with Lauren, she came out to see the one over near Old Sturridge Village with me because if anybody's gone by there recently, the water has gone down, which has been very lovely. Shane didn't mention this, but we were actually able to get in there and operate those valves for the first time in five years, which those valves help control and feed O S V and even more key, their school over there. So we wanted to make sure that we had, um, and we've had some money set aside to potentially redirect that, but if we can do something to be able to keep access to those valves, that actually takes off one of those headaches that probably makes us not sleep. So we are looking to file a notice of intent for both of those locations to put some beaver pond leveler controllers in to keep the waters at a more manageable level so that it doesn't affect Burgess School Road and our pump station on the one side and doesn't affect us over at O S V on the other side with access. So we're not going to totally remove them out of there, but we're going to be able to manage the environment a little better. Um, and I think that's probably my highlights at this point, what I've been working on. I've had, also been supporting Robin in the Fisk Hill cellular, um, bidding process, and we're ongoing with that. And I, we do have coming up, we will be putting out our annual bids for materials and things of that nature, so it's just, again, loved to have already had it out, but can't sometimes catch a break, so.
How it goes. All right, questions for Heather?
Heather, on the August report, where it says storm down near the bottom.
Storm mandates?
Yeah, it says treated and plowed roads. I know you didn't plow them, so.
No, in the, in the, which, Ag-?
We don't have an August report.
We don't have an August report. I think it's August 5th you're looking at, April?
It might be April.
It's the April report. We actually did treat and plow roads in April.
Yeah, we hit a late.
In the first report, if you look under re, it says monthly report, April 2024. That's the April.
I was looking at the top date.
Yes, that's, that's today's date. No, I'm hoping we're not plowing today.
We have a major climate issue if we're plowing today.
I, although I think after the heat we've been having, I might actually welcome a little snowstorm.
It'd not be so bad.
Oh, don't, beg your pardon.
Down in Florida.
Yeah, and the governors, never mind.
Keep moving, Mary. Anything else?
No, that was it.
All right, Heather?
Heather, um, I've gotten a few phone calls from a resident up on Cedar Street.
Okay.
Around 159. It seems that when it rains, there's a runoff and it's eroding his property. And, um, he said he first brought this to D P W prior to your arrival, so that would be like almost two years ago.
I think, I, I'll have to go look at the, at the actual location, but I have been and tried to get in contact with somebody out there because they asked me if they could put a curb in, and I told them I needed some more information, and I haven't got it. So I, I think it's that location where it comes down his driveway.
Yeah, no, it comes along the side of his property, and, um, he had mulch and dirt there, but it's just eroded its back probably, because I stopped there before I came in here.
I'll have to go look at it.
About a foot.
We, we, we've been having, so I alluded to this, and I should maybe say this out loud again, because I don't think I said this. So I've been getting multiple calls about washouts everywhere, not just Cedar Street, everywhere. I just went to look at one earlier today, and yes, it was a six-inch gully right off the edge of the road on private property. These are happening because we are beginning so hot, such high, um, like such intense rainstorms that none of the drainage is set up to do that. Um, so we have definitely been trying to respond to a lot of washouts. Some of them we can respond really quickly, and it does depend on how major or how bad and how deep. If it's more of a landscaping issue, then that doesn't get the priority of a major road with a washout on the edge. Fisk Hill, we had one-foot-deep gullies. We just got that paved last week. We've known about it for two months. So patience, it might be on our list, but we have to prioritize because we can own, again, I have limited staff. Tomorrow, it's going to rain. I can't do anything with gravel or asphalt. It's just how it is. What's, what's it going to do Wednesday? It's going to rain. Again, gravel or asphalt. I can't, alls I can do is unplug drains and make sure that we're not having pickup trees, unplug drains, pickup trees, unplug drains. So we get into this habit of, we're always just picking up from where we left off, unfortunately. So I will definitely check on it and see where it is, but like I said, today I got a call and I'm like, oh yeah, no, if somebody, and I, I get it, there, people want to keep their properties nice, but we can only do so much, and sometimes it's about where we have to prioritize our resources. I still have to trim back the brush on the roads, which, where I trimmed, the big, you know, in May, needs to be trimmed again because, again, we're getting these recurring, we've had the perfect growing season. I was, I, you know, the rain, the heat, the rain, the heat, everything, all the weeds are.
So has we morphed into more and more subtropical weather, we're going to, which I think unfortunately is going to be the norm here?
I agree.
And we're going to have less hard freezes in the winter. What's going to have to happen is that as we build into our plans, we're going to have to figure out where we're using hay bales, where we, where we, um, how, how do we, you know, not, not, not this, the next six months, but like over the next three or four years, how are we stopping it? Because it's going to be, even on, I remember, it was right after it got really hot and everything got kind, uh, might, might have been the summer before last, and they were work, doing a lot of work on Route 20, and it got so hot that the, all the dirt no longer was permeable, and the water was running across all of Route 20 into the lakes. And it's just like, that's the type of stuff that we're going to be, yeah.
We're going to be seeing it more and more because our, the intensity of our rainstorms are harder and harder, and they're more frequent. So where something washes out and a little bit washes away, a week later, more comes and washes it away. Where previously we might get a storm and it might be an, you know, an inch in an hour, now we're getting two to three-inch-hour storms on a regular basis, which is not what typical cycle is. We're getting much more intense.
After weeks of drought, where things have packed hard.
And, and we might want to come up with some guidance for property owners anyways, just in terms of things you can do to mitigate for a washout. Yeah, because even hay bales, things like that, they, you know, you can't just jam them into another, uh, water area, but if you, but if, there's more reasonable ways to.
So I, I will.
I would appreciate that because he's, like I said, it's been two years, and he mentioned a Cape Cod burn.
Mm-hmm. Um. Again, that's asphalt and paving.
All right, no, I understand that with the rain, but if you could just go out there and look and maybe talk to him. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks Heather. Um, all right, anything else for Heather?
Thanks Heather.
All right, Heather, thank you.
Thank you Heather.
Robin, you, do you need me to say on the tie-in bond stuff?
I think we're down the amendment on that. Actually, do you want to just take that? Can we take that out of order just in case?
Sure, yeah. What is it?
Uh, it's amendment. Was she? Nope.
No, it's a grand trunk, sorry.
Okay.
I can talk on either one of them if you would like.
It's K, consideration of possible action.
Yeah, so we're going to go into the agenda items. We're going to skip to agenda item K for the people at home. Consideration of possible action to authorize the chair to execute the agreement with tie-in bond for the well number one, uh, water treatment plant filter media replacement amendment number one in the amount of $11,500.
So we, um, we went out to bid for this once. Uh, we didn't have enough funds. We got additional funding to be able to cover the difference. We need to go out, we need to do the whole rebidding services. When we did the first bid, there were some suggestions, so we're going to tweak the, the bid documents a little bit, that's why it's 11,000, but then we need to go through the whole bidding process again. And it is a highly technical project, so we need to make sure we still engage the engineer in this, so.
Okay. Uh, questions?
Where's the money coming from?
It, it's coming from the same article that we got the additional funding from.
Okay. Um, with that, do we have a, a motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the chair to execute the agreement replacement amendment number one in the amount of $11,500 with tie-in bond for well number one, water treatment plant filter media replacement.
Do we have a second?
A second.
All right, uh, we have, uh, all right, all those in favor? Yeah, I just have it.
Thanks Heather.
Thanks Heather.
Do you want me to do, you're good on grand trunk?
Yeah. Go enjoy the sunshine.
All right, we're going back up to the top. Um, consider, going to agenda item A, consideration of possible action to increase the F Y 25 spending limit to $60,000 for the Board of Health Pay As You Throw Revolving Fund.
So this was a script news error on my part. Um, we had increased this per town meeting, I think it was two years ago or last year, and the draft I was working of, when I pulled the warrant together, was it older draft? So it literally was a script news error, that just, this is the protocol, you have to vote to change it because it, that's what was listed in this year's book. It goes through FinCom and you.
Okay, so the error, just so I'm understanding it, so the, the, the error was in the book but not in what was event voted on?
No, it was actually voted, it had been voted in the past to 60,000.
Okay, so town meeting voted it for 60,000?
Sixty, and then this year I had it written at 20, and the whole thing got collectively voted with the 20 in there. We never voted to change it, like we would normally vote to change in individual line. It just got voted as a block this time because there was no change, but I had a typo.
Okay.
So town meeting voted 20. It should have been 60.
But they voted 60 the time before, and it's never, yeah.
And so we have a considerable amount of expenses that are budgeted for every year out of the pay-as-you-throw money, and so we will not be able to get through the fiscal year at that $20,000 level. Just, just the bags alone will probably exceed that $20,000 amount. So under, um, under Mass General law, you are allowed to increase with the, of the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee. So you're tonight, Thursday night, and asking the FinCom to do the same thing, um, and it is permissible. And again, it's, you know, we're not trying to exceed an amount that wasn't previously voted by the town, so.
No, no, I just, I wanted to confirm that.
It was never vote to drop it.
No, yeah, Barbara predicted my, my concern. Um, all right, I'm, I'm fine with that. Does anybody have any questions, concerns?
Nope.
Do we have a motion?
We make a motion to increase the F Y 25 spending limit to $60,000 for the Board of Health Pay As You Throw Revolving Fund.
Second.
Wait, all those in favor? Yeah, I just have them.
I apologize to that one.
Ever, you here for anything else?
Yep, the next one.
Yeah.
All right, uh, consideration and possible action, increase the fee for a municipal lien certificate from $25 to $50 effective September 1st, 2024. What's going on here, Barbara?
So we really are behind the times on the amount that we charge for a municipal lien certificate. Uh, I surveyed our 10-town comparison communities. Um, uh, the majority of them are already at the $50, so there's no in the middle. So I know it's, I'm looking for a 50% increase, but either charge $25 or 50. We've been charging 20, $25 is what the law states, so in the 30 years that I've been here, it's been $25. Uh, we have a number of attorney's offices that actually send us $50, and we then have to ask them for another check because a lot of communities throughout the state do charge the $50 increase. So I think it's time, um, it puts us in line with what the majority of, uh, cities and towns in Massachusetts are doing, and, uh, that's pretty much it. And I, I just gave, I gave you some perspective of some of the fees, and, uh, it's interesting how really the number of municipal lien requests we get is totally related to, uh, the market. So interest rates are low, we get a lot of requests, as interest rates go up, you see them drop off. Right now, we have obviously a housing stock shortage, so that affects it too, but I, I know that, you know, the Fed is looking to probably, uh, lower the rates in September is what the latest is.
After today, it might be tomorrow.
Okay, well, okay. I haven't been following any news today of what happened, so, uh, but anyway, I, you know, I think that, uh, it makes total sense. And a municipal lien certificate, I mean, it is a legal document. If it isn't accurate, uh, we, we, you know, it's, it's really, it basically is a time shot, a snapshot of a certain period of time of what is due by someone when they're either refinancing or, uh, buying or selling a home. And if the information on there is not accurate, uh, we can lose the ability to actually collect that amount of taxes. So it's not something that's done very quick. I mean, it, there, there's a whole process in my office to make sure the information is accurate, and, uh, like I said, I, I think it, I think it makes sense to increase the fee. Um, and again, I know the 50% seems like a lot, but again, it's in line with other municipalities, what they're charging.
The 25 isn't even covering close to the labor cost.
It, it would not be.
For the hours that actually takes.
And what's interesting, several years ago, and Jamie, you would know this, but the, the registry increased all their fees considerably, um, and we never did that on our side, so a lot of the fees went up, um, you know, quite an, quite an amount, um, and...
I wouldn't know that. If, if they change, would, would they cause a lawsuit?
Okay, well, maybe the people who are involved still have. Okay, well, you know, a lot of, a lot of the fees that were, you know, like $75 went to $105. So, you know, it's something constant, and, and again, um, the section of M G L that, that I referenced here, we, uh, you know, it allows us to be able to do this, and, um, it may actually allow me to just do it, but I think that, you know, the board is the one that actually sets the fees in the town, so.
Yeah, makes sense to me.
Yeah.
I think after 30 years.
I know, I know, right? Thank you.
All right, so, uh, do we have any, do we have a motion?
I make a motion that we increase the fee for municipal lien certificate from $25 to $50 effective September 1st, 2024.
Great, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Perfect, thanks Barbara.
Have a good one.
Okay.
You too.
All right. Consideration and possible action on the approval of the following town of Sturridge election workers. Joan Chamberlain, Tim Bardley, Beverly Freeman, Stan Delman, Chris Wilson, Pat Roy, Marie Dupre, Alyssa Kay, Elaine Cook, Diane Tripaso, Susan Schwartz, Arthur Quimet, Michelle Moran, Sandra Gibson Quigley, Nancy Flores, Pat Howard, Janet Resinian, Lucette Dolmapp Favreau, Cheryl Economus, Chris Cassendike, Nancy Cassendike, Dino Economus, Deb Morris, uh, Mar- Mar- Maricia Mattioli, and Sharon McDonald. That's pretty much what it, uh...
That's them. That's my team.
Unless you have anything for us on it, Lynn, I, I might just ask for a motion unless you.
Say, say, Marsha.
Marsha.
Oh.
Marsha Mattioli, yes.
Oh, yeah, that's a typo. Thank you. I'll read anything that you put on the teleprompter. Um, but the, but the, um, so with that, do we have a motion?
So moved.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor? That's that, all right then.
I'm not repeating those names today.
And then, moving on to action item D, consideration of possible action on signing
And then, moving on to action item D, consideration and possible action on signing the warrant for the twenty twenty-four state primary.
Yes.
All right.
They can sign it now.
Okay.
And while I'm waiting for the signature on the warrant, I just want to let, um, the board know that right now we've sent over sixteen hundred vote by mail ballots out as of today.
Sixteen hundred, wow.
Yep. And they're still coming in.
So I think we need to make a, uh, before we start signing, I need a motion on the warrant.
Yeah.
Yeah, good.
I'll make a motion to sign the state primary warrant for twenty twenty-four.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
All right, great. All those in favor? Excellent.
And that's coming around, and you have to sign all seven pages.
And were we just starting here? Just so I signed it right?
First one.
Right here? Just make sure I signed it right place. We're starting here, right?
Yes.
Okay. All right, just quickly. All right. Mary, you're gonna love my penmanship.
Probably write like your daughter.
She's pretty smart, Mary, I'll take it.
And congratulations, Jamie and Parisa, on your new addition.
Oh, she's very cute. Doesn't, doesn't have a job yet though, so.
Get moving on it.
I know. Lazy, lazy bones. All right. So that is going around for your signature. Um, so that, is that, you don't have anything else on here, Lynn, right?
I don't think one has any.
No.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Thanks Lynn.
Thank you.
Thanks Lynn. All right, I'm gonna keep going while those signatures are, if that's all right with everybody. Uh, action item E, consideration and possible action on a transient vendor application for David Brockman, DB and BC Productions LLC for a vintage clothing show at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on September first, twenty twenty-four, and September second, twenty twenty-four, from eight AM to eight PM. All right.
I did this before.
Yeah, I don't think there was much here. Were there any questions? Earl's fine with it. Anything from you guys?
No.
All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the transient vendor application for David Brockman, DB and BC Productions LLC for a vintage clothing show at the Sturbridge Host Hotel at, on September first, twenty twenty-four, and September second, twenty twenty-four, from eight AM to eight PM.
Second.
Oh, great. All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, moving on to consideration and possible action to accept the letter of resignation from Patrick Brissette from the Sturbridge Cultural Council, uh, effective July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four. Um, yeah. So the, uh, Mr. Brissette moved away from the town?
I believe so.
Yeah, that's what the latter stated.
Yeah, he was the one that moved away. We had a few different resignations come in this week.
Yeah, so, all right, so I'm gonna make a motion to accept the letter of resignation from Patrick Brissette from the Sturbridge Cultural Council effective July twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, with our thanks for his service. Do we have a second?
Second.
Great, all those in favor? All right. Okay, and now we are, uh, reappointment to the STA from Sandra Gibson Quigley. Um, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Sandra Gibson Quigley to the Sturbridge Tourist Association for a term to expire June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-seven. Uh, do, any comments? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to reappoint, uh, Sandra Gibson Quigley to the Sturbridge Tourist Association for a term, term to expire June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-seven.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. All right, moving on, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Edward Goodwin to the Community Preservation Committee for a term to expire June twenty-first, twenty twenty-seven. Do we have any questions on that one?
No.
Uh, do we have a, a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Uh, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Penidumis to the Community Preservation Committee for a term to expire June twentieth, twenty twenty-seven. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it, great. Consideration and possible action on the report reappointment of Jim Douglas to the Sturbridge Cultural Council for a term to expire July sixth, twenty twenty-seven. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Skipping to K, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Barbara Search to the Community Preservation Committee as the Historical Committee Representative for a term to expire June nineteen, twenty twenty-seven. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. Consideration and possible action on the appointment of Dina Sexton to the Community Preservation Committee as the open space representative. She will serve out the term previously held by Lauren. Term will expire July twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Mary, you for that one? Yeah. And, great, it's unanimous. Um, consideration and possible action to ratify the action of accepting a fifty-five thousand dollar cybersecurity grant from the Commonwealth. What's going on here, Robin?
So, um, we got the grant, but I had to sign off on it before we were gonna have a chance to meet, and I figured you wouldn't be too mad at me signing a grant to get money. No, I figured you'd be okay with me signing that.
So this is all just system security stuff that they, that you wanna sign a grant?
Yeah, this is a grant that, um, yeah, that Jeremy will be leading the charge on, on just further protection.
Do we have a cybersecurity policy in town?
We're working on it. Jeremy's trying, we, we've done, he does training, he does testing, he puts us through tests. We get these test emails from him every so often. Who opens it gets punished.
And does Maya, is, is, does our Maya policy include cybersecurity?
Yes, we, yes, we up, we upped it, in fact. We, yeah, we've made sure that we are covered because of the ransom issues right now.
Yeah, because they're pretty amazing.
So we have decent coverage on that, and then we get more coverage if we do, we get, you know, more rewards if we do training and whatnot.
And does he have a everybody doing, um, two-step verification?
Yeah, we just had to re-log on, we all had to go through our phones and all that, so, yeah, so.
We also do it through the state for elections, too.
Yeah, yeah, because it does, that act, that just goes such-
So we really are trying to shore up as best as we can.
Thanks, thanks Lynn.
Thanks Lynn.
All right, great. So, um, do you have any questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to accept and ratify the action of accepting a fifty-five thousand dollar cybersecurity grant from the Commonwealth.
Second.
All those in favor? The ayes have it. Great. Um, uh, when we are on to consideration and possible action, reappoint Carson Stuberg to the Conservation Commission for a term to expire June twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-seven. Do we have-
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor? Great. All right. Consideration, possible action on the reappointment of Antonia Squire to the Cultural Council for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, consideration and possible action to authorize the chair to execute the agreement with tie-in bond in the amount of sixty-five thousand three hundred dollars for the Grand Trunk Trail Continuation Amendment One, bidding and construction phase services.
So I apologize, this didn't get to you earlier. It was my bad. Jean had asked for me to get this on the agenda. Uh, this is all part of our Grand Trunk Trail project, paid through all of our trails' money and grants that we get. Um, tie-in bond does the design, the engineering work that leads to construction, so we're fine on the procurement end on this.
Okay. Um, all right, any questions from the board? Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to execute the agreement with tie-in bond in the amount of sixty-five thousand three hundred dollars for the Grand Trunk Trail Continuation Amendment One, bidding and construction phase services.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Great. All right, old business. Mary Lou?
I have nothing.
Chase?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mary?
No.
Um, I have two things. Uh, first, um, there's been some email, uh, on Tretor Beach that I've talked to Robin a little bit about, and, um, things are moving forward, we're clearing up, uh, uh, whatever's going on with the title to the road to make sure it's perfected, or we take steps to perfect. Our, our goal really is to, um, I think, by next summer, uh, excuse me, by next, uh, town meeting, have something for the, the community to consider.
Oh, God.
Yeah, so whatever those things are doing, I appreciate Robin's work, and, uh, so she, that's more of an update, I guess, as much as it is old business. And then, um, the other thing I wanted to discuss was what's going on at Kerwood. Where are we with that?
Uh, I haven't heard anything further. We did, uh, we have ensured that there's at least, as recently as about six or eight weeks ago, that there was no activity going on there, because the license was revoked. Conservation is on it, continues to work on it. I know the, and the legal process is just going through the channels.
Okay. Um, but how do we know that there's not, people aren't active on the site? Is there any?
We haven't observed.
Yeah.
From the legal positioning that we can observe it.
Yeah, no, I get you.
Robin has to lunch.
I put my feet up to have lunch up there with my truck. My truck's not subtle. You can't miss the big red truck.
All right, so on that note, um, now going to, uh, new business. Um, so, uh, I'll start. I don't have any. Mary, new business?
Um, new, old. Um, Michelle, could you check, because on these reappointments to the Community Preservation Committee from other committees, I thought that the committee, like Planning Board-
Yeah.
I thought they voted their designate.
Yes, they, they do. And we typically, what we've done since I've been here is we put it in front of the board as a courtesy, but it really isn't a vote. I think we are right now, but it really, realistically, if it's a designate of the Planning Board, it's the, for example, it's the Planning Board's vote. And then we just present it to you all. Um, we probably should not be presenting as a vote, it probably should more be presented as a non-action item.
Information.
Yeah, yeah. We'll make sure we do it that way, but yeah, it is really their appointment. We will be having a, another library board appointment coming up, unfortunately, with the passing. Um, if we, if they do decide to appoint rather than wait till the election, because they do have enough meetings before the election, they might want to appoint someone. We have to do that jointly. Last time, we had them do it first, and then we did it. It really has to be like the school.
Joint meeting.
So I will let you know, that might be the next meeting or early September.
Great. Anything else, Mary?
No, that was it.
Chase?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mary?
Nothing.
All right, and so, uh, the Cultural Council, just pull it on here.
Oh, just the those-
Does not stay?
Yeah, we need to fill the spots.
Yep, and we already had so many emails today asking.
Perfect. Okay, great. Um, and then, correspondence?
I don't think we have any. No.
Okay.
Nobody loves us.
Nobody, no, sometimes that's cool.
So the, all right, so moving to, uh, approval of minutes, uh, beginning with the October sixteen minutes, which, Mary, I don't believe you were at. Um, Mary, uh, Mary Lou and Chase, did you have any edits?
Um, on page one, the last bullet point, um, I think it should be in front of the Board of Selectmen. The last line.
Oh, in front of the board.
In front of, in front of the board, yep.
Gotcha.
Yep.
All right, anything else?
Uh, yeah.
Keep going.
Second page, under the gateway signage presentation, um, says DPW will inspect once they have the location.
Will inspection. DPW is in the second, it's in the second sentence, it says, DBW will inspection. So it should say inspect.
Yep.
It's a verb. Mary Lou, anything else there? Keep going, it's fine.
I'm gonna go home and cry.
Oh, no, don't worry about it.
I already discussed my name, but, um, on page one ninety-two, uh, the motion, let's see, for a second, third, the fourth motion down, it should be to approve the appointment of?
Sorry, mine's not numbered like this.
Oh.
Oh, to appoint one, is it for Jane?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
That's all I have for that.
Chase, anything?
No.
All right, I had nothing either. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three?
I'll move, a motion to approve as amended.
Perfect.
Second.
All those in favor?
One abstention.
And one abstention. Moving to, um, the meeting, uh, July fifteenth, twenty twenty-four minutes, which I was not here for.
You had a good excuse.
Me.
I don't have anything.
Chase, do you have any?
I have nothing, no.
Mary, do you?
Um, no.
All right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to-
Excuse me, which one was that?
We're on the, the last week's meeting.
July fifteenth.
Oh, okay.
That was the order they ran in there.
You oughta they list it.
So the, uh, the, uh, were you looking at the right one?
No, I didn't.
No edits, okay. So we have, I think, Chase, did you make a motion?
Yes, yep.
A second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Three to, uh, and one abstention, Michelle. All right. And then, um, the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four minutes. Uh, Chase was not present for this one, so, Mary Lou, Mary, any edits?
Uh, first page, under Public Service Announcements, second paragraph, um, she, says she wanted to say this, I think that should be is, not sigh.
Is, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Anything else?
I don't have anything else.
Okay. Mary?
No.
All right, do we have a motion to approve the June seventeenth minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the June seventeenth, twenty twenty-four minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Yeah, three and one abst, uh, three and one abstention. Great. All right, Citizens Forum.
Don't see anybody.
I don't see anybody. All right, with that, we are done. We have, uh, okay, yeah,